Okay, at this time we'll call to order and I'll ask our clerk if she would establish a quorum of the board.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. We do have the agenda that was published on our website and also social media. Is there any modifications to our agenda tonight? Hearing none, do we have an approval to approve our agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. By Commissioner Askew, any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. You do have the minutes from our previous meeting, which was here back on April the 13th, 2023. The clerk has prepared the minutes. Is there any modifications, changes, or questions to those minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. By Commissioner Hart, any further discussion? Hearing none, approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we do have one public hearing tonight. So this is on a request for a variance for less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 132 Learning to Lean Lane, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial, number 0-358-003. And so anyone that would like to speak to this tonight, as we come to you, we ask that you come to the podium so we can hear you clearly and we can pick you up on the camera. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this zoning at this time? Yes, sir. Please come forward and if you would state your name for the record.
My name is Jose Martinez. I am the owner of the property at 132 Learning to Lean Lane, and I was requesting a variance. My mother's really sick and ill, and I got the notes from her doctor, and I was hoping that she could, you know, spend more time with us on the property, and you know, my grandson would like it if she was there also and to take care of her. Can I present you with these documents?
Sure.
You can actually keep those for your records if you need to have the original.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Anything else you'd like to add or say?
Um, no, sir.
Okay, that's fine. You don't have to, just want to make sure you said everything you wanted to say.
Well, I'm a disabled veteran also, and my wife and I do take care of my mother-in-law also, which is a, she has Alzheimer's and dementia. So, you know, it's like we're taking care of, you know, our family, so we're just trying to do that and keep everyone together instead of being so separate apart. And she's probably going to be homeless in Florida, so that's another reason why I was, you know, requesting this. And I spoke to this at the other hearing, so.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you for being here tonight, and you'll see on the agenda, we'll be taking action at them on this later in the agenda, and then we'll see if anyone else wants to speak, but we'll be taking action on this tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak, either for or against this variance request? For or against it? Either way. Okay, hearing none, we'll close out our public hearing and we'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which we have a proclamation for Senior Day. So I'm going to read that. Says by the Walker County Board of Commissioners, Senior Citizen Day 2023. Whereas the U.S. Census Bureau estimates 13,163 Walker County residents are age 65 or older, and whereas Walker County recognizes the impact of contributions made by older adults to our community, and whereas May is Older American Month in the state of Georgia, and residents are encouraged to celebrate the strengths of older adults and the power connected in engagement in building a stronger community for a stronger Georgia. And whereas older adults are encouraged to find a new passion, go on an adventure, and push the boundaries by not letting age define their limits as a mean to stay connected with their community. And whereas Walker County supports organizations like North Georgia Community Action, which operates senior life centers in Chickamauga and Lafette, to assist older adults with daily nutritional needs, health education, and general welfare. Whereas Walker County desires to recognize and honor the older adults in our community. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Chairman of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 17th as Senior Citizen Day in Walker County, encourage our older adults to attend a special event at the Walker County Civic Center at 10:00 on May 17th in their honor. Signed and sealed 11th day of May 2023. And the senior citizen event that's being held on May 17th is sponsored by Robert Stoltz and his brother, Don Stoltz, and their family, so thank you for what y'all have done for second generation of doing this.
Yes, sir.
And so thank you for what you do. We want to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you, sir.
And if you'd like to say anything additional about Senior Citizen Day?
Just my, Senior Citizens Day means a great deal to my family. In the 70s, my father and other business civic leaders, Mr. James Ingram, Ron Harrison, Mr. Bob and Charlie Gilbert, Charlie Gwynn, Joe Hall, these gentlemen wanted to honor our senior citizens. And it was a special day for my dad and those other business leaders, and so it just means a great deal to me. As previously stated, as a boy, I went with my dad to ShopRite, Big Apple, Piggly Wiggly to get some donations, and so it means a great deal to my family, and I would certainly invite anyone who would like to attend, and just my family and myself wants to thank the board for the proclamation. It means a great deal.
And also, all seniors are welcome to attend, and it's 10:00 at the Walker County Civic Center, and it's a no-charge event.
That is correct.
And our good friend, Robert Wardlaw, with Lucky IQ Barbecue is catering the event, so the food would be great. So all of y'all out there that's been wanting to try some of that, if you're a senior adult, come out on the 17th of May, and we will have a great time together.
And it's a Western theme, so wear your cowboy hats and your boots.
Very good, very good.
Robert, thank you for bringing that back to the community. I think y'all deserve to have a personal.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our annual property assessment update by Terry Gilree with the assessor's office. Mr. Terry?
Thank you, first of all, for letting me come and speak to you about this. This is something we have to do every year, unfortunately, I don't have good news today. But we, because of how the markets went in the past year, we've had to raise our values. And we actually, this time, it wasn't just residential properties, we hit every type of property, whether it's commercial, residential, ag, and industrial. All of them had to have an adjustment. So we were finally to that point. I've been saying for several years that we got to do something about land, got to do something about the land values, because the sales are here, they're through the roof. And I don't know why, but they are, and they kept on going up. Even with us making adjustments every year, we're still having to adjust more to catch up with that. And so that's the place that we're at right now, we had to do this. So notices will go out the 15th of May, and then May the 29th is the last day to file an appeal. So expect that to come in the mail next week. And we didn't want to do it, but we had to, because our numbers have been low every year with the Department of Audits. And even though we've been raising them, we can't chase them fast enough. So that's why I was standing before you tonight to say, expect it, it's going to happen. So Sarah has a little handout for everyone that kind of gives a general explanation as to why we had to do what we've done.
Yeah. So if any property owner gets their assessment notice, which will be mailed out to say May the 15th, if they dispute that, they have until June 29th to file that appeal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we do have a couple, about 70, that we had to pull out to get some things done, and their timeline will be a little different. It'll, theirs will go out on the 16th, and then they'll have the 30th to file their appeal. They'll still get their 45 days, so we can't deny that to anybody, so.
So what is it allowed for this year compared to last year?
Last year, well, last year we were at, we had to raise the 25%. It's 30% overall this year. Now, I don't want to step in too early, but this coming year, for 2024, we've already started to work on that, the quantity of deed transactions has dropped. This time last year, we were right at around 2,000 deed transactions. Right now, we're right at 900. So we're seeing a lot of, this year, a whole lot of, like, family transactions and, you know, that sort of thing, where they're clearing up property titles and different things like that. That kind of helps the actual, actually, so far, what we've got qualified, when we say qualified, are those that we're going to use in the sales. You know, a lot of these, that 4,000 we had last year, we trimmed that down to 988. We were able to kick out a lot of this, or this would have been even worse. So for the ones that we're using for sampling, you know, that brought it down to something a little bit acceptable, at 30% versus 60 or 70%, we didn't want that to happen, so we were able to kick all those out. This year so far, we qualified right around 200, about 900, and we're still going after them. So some of that, I hope the majority of it's going to be family-type things, or, you know, someone dealing something to their sales or to their own company or something like that. So the, as far as the sale prices go, we're seeing it both ways now. Where last year, we seen it here, it was just here, all the sales were here, ridiculously high. This year, I'm starting to see some here, and here, and here, and here. So the, we're hoping that that will equalize, and hopefully it'll level off everything and no have to do this again. Now, the problem in all of that, of course, is demand, so it's driving everything. I told Shannon and Brian, what was it, Monday, you guys with me? I went to a meeting in October, and the speaker there, they did a lot of analysis on all of this. He said, in the state of Georgia, there's a demand for 93,000 permits, the state of Georgia. And that's October, and there's only 16,000 permits issued. So the demand for housing in the state of Georgia is just through the roof. Absolutely through the roof. I know that people are seeing on the news that the housing market has dropped and this and that. That's not true.
Part of where you live.
For our area. Right. There's kids that looked this up for us, and there's 10 hot markets in the United States, and one of those 10 hot markets is here. Some reason, some reason people want to live.
And if things keep continuing the way they are in the country, it's going to stay hot.
Yeah.
But that area keeps.
Does that include Chattanooga and surrounding counties?
It's Chattanooga, North Georgia area. I mean, we're basically a suburb of Chattanooga, so we're kind of part of that market, you know, and we're, it's very pop. State, actually, the whole state of Georgia has seen increases after increases after increases. Even though the amount of sales volume has gone down, the sales prices are still going up. So it's been, it's been an incredible thing to watch. You know, so we're, we're kind of, we're, in some ways, we're lucky, you know, because we're not seeing that decline like some areas.
Yeah, I mean, you know, people, houses are worth more, that's true.
Yeah, of course, of course, you know, and the commissioners are, they're, of course, will tell you, they're going to, they're going to do what they got to do on their end to adjust things and make things right for the citizens of this county. And we just hope that, you know, of course, the school board follows in that same suit.
Let's hope it does.
Yeah. But, you know, we, we do what we can to keep our citizens from getting hit so hard, but we have to do this by law. Everything that we do is by law. There's people that are out there now that think that we make this stuff up as we go, but we don't. We're guided by the Georgia Code section that our legislators put together, our APM, which is the appraisal procedure manual that's put together by Department of Revenue. So we have guidelines that we have to go by because the law says you got to do this. Doesn't matter who's in there running the office, it has to be done. So we're doing the best we can to do that, but chasing these ridiculous sales has been hard to do. And we just ask the people, you know, don't get mad at us, or them, we're not the ones buying and selling these properties. So it's all 100% influenced by the market. Whatever the market is, is what we have to adjust by. Unfortunately, the sales in Walker County are our market, so we have to use that and make those adjustments so that at the state level, they could see that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and treating everybody equally. So don't blame any of us, blame your neighbors, your family, or your ex-neighbors, the ones that sold out. And, but they're, you know, they're the ones to blame, and I don't blame them. I would want the highest I could get for my property, too, and everybody else would, too. Unfortunately, it affects everybody when you have a whole bunch of them. One or two, we wouldn't have done anything. But we have them in the hundreds, so we have, we had to do something to get those numbers to come out right. So that's pretty much about it, right? That's about all we need to talk about on our part.
Well, thank you for being here and presenting tonight.
Thank y'all for whittling on it as hard as you can. I know y'all beat your head against the wall sometime, and we appreciate all you do.
Yes, thank y'all.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comments. Anyone that would like to come tonight and make any public comment? Yes, sir. Please come forward and you would state your name for the record.
I'm Randy Pedman, and I'm representing the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission. Excuse me. Just to update y'all on our historic survey grant. Well, once y'all made your resolution to give us our authority to pursue that grant, we were a week late this year. So we had to, we had to wait until the 1st of next year. There's like a six-week period that we have to apply for that grant. So, you know, we're kind of stuck in the water there for the next, you know, rest of the year. So everything's ready, we're setting on go, just, you know, we just missed the timeline on that. Another thing of interest is the Oak Hill School. It was part of the Macklemore Cove historic area. It's sitting on the side of a hill off West Cove Road. We want to preserve that school, we want to bring it off that hill, but we need a place to put it. The county owns property just below where that school's at, at Farm, also some property up by West Cove, Cedar Grove Community Center in front of the firehouse. But we'd like to keep it in, down there at Macklemore Cove. So that's something for y'all to ponder on. Robert's been to some of our meetings, he's kind of familiar with the Oak Hill School, and a lady by the name of Heather Kitchen, she's been doing research for us on that school. Her family dates back, her great-great-grandfather was actually a teacher there at the school around 1905. And it's an old log cabin school, and I'll send y'all digital pictures of that school. For it to be so old, it's in really good shape, you know, so. Oak Hill School, I mean, it's, that's, that's what y'all put us on the commission to do, and we're really working.
Who owns that, that structure?
Well, I'm working with our state representatives on that. It's actually set in, our tax maps show it's set on state property. Some of the people from the state says it's set on county property. So we're trying to work through that with District 1 Representative Mike Cameron, and like I said, Robert's a little familiar with it, so that's what we're doing. Before we can do much more, we need to designate a place to put it, you know, so that'll be, you know, up to y'all, you know? You got the property, and we'd like to bring it off that hill so the community can enjoy it.
Randy, any thoughts on, once a decision is made where the property sits, how to go about moving the structure? Does it need to be dismantled or?
Well, there's a couple things, I'm talking to a couple people. Some people say, hey, we can pick that thing up and move it.
Tommy Pan, I guess you know.
Tommy Pan?
P&amp;D House, will he feel, feel doing it anymore? He's about, probably, they're going to be.
And then somebody else suggested taking it apart and re-assembling it. I mean, it's got, you know, it's, we've got it dated back to the night before the Battle of Chickamauga. So we're going to get the Georgia Civil War Commission involved in it, because it's got a Civil War connection, so that, you know, we can help get funds to do this, so. Anything else? I don't know the time, probably about.
When's your next meeting, Randy?
Our next meeting is the 3rd Monday of May, and I can't remember the exact date.
Okay, that's fine.
And we meet here at the Lafette Library, Lafette Library.
At 6:00, correct?
6:00.
And I would encourage citizens to attend, anyone who wants to learn about Walker County history, history in general. I mean, a lot of topics are hit on, Native American history, Civil War history, it's the history of the county in general, and very informative.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of history here, as well as the African-American history.
Yes.
You know, the District Hill area, there's a lot of, lot of history here in Walker County, where a lot of people just assume Walker County's history is the Civil War. That ain't true. Oh, there's also a church up on Lookout Mountain, High Georgia Community Christian Church, I believe it's established in 1927, and it's set in Fakin. And Robert has brought that to our attention, so we're going to be working on it, too. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. So how many is next Monday?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you for the update. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move next on our agenda under new business. Have we have a resolution? Okay, Resolution R. 22-23, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to authorize the submission of an application for a land and water conservation grant. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas Walker County owns and operates a recreational park on the grounds of the Walker County Civic Center campus, and whereas the Board desires for Walker County to submit a pre-application for funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund, the LWSCF, to assist with making improvements to the community's assets. Whereas, in the event Walker County's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, the Board certifies and assures that it has the ability and the intentions to finance 50% of the total project cost, and will more forward with due diligence to prepare or have prepared appropriation documentation required for a formal LWSCF application. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby authorize the filing of the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Application with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. Be it further resolved, the Board agrees to provide the 50% match required for this grant, so resolved and adopted the 11th day of May 2023. What this is in relationship to is also we have an allocation in our splosh funds to do a, an all-inclusive playground at our Walker County Civic Center. So we're trying to leverage that project along with this grant to be able to have a bigger project. So this would be a pre-application, they're very competitive. I think the application is due in June of this year, and then, you know, they review those, and if they feel favorable about our application, we'll go into kind of to that second round and hopefully for final award. But this is just to authorize that process and submittal, and then if we're successful, then that documentation and commitment and exact dollar amounts and all would come back to this board for final authorization.
So we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be tied, too? In other words, when we make this, pass this resolution, 50%, 50% of $100 million?
No, I think the maximum is $300,000.
Okay, so in other words, it'd be very doable, whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good, good question. Anything else? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the Resolution R. 22-23?
Motion, motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. Okay, the next item we have is for the variance for less than five acres in an A1 agriculture zone for property located at 132 Learning to Lean Lane, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tap ma, tap, tax map impartial number 0-358-033. This was held last Thursday, also in a public hearing at the Planning Commission. The recommendation that come from the Planning Commission was to deny this request. We have heard from the property owner, and the documentation is in your packet as well.
I'd like to hear just a little bit more about how that went down. John, were you, were you present at the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Could you, could you come up and give us just a little oversight, too? I just kind of wanted to get a little more information, I'm still not sure exactly what he was asking for.
What he's wanting to do is put a mobile home on the front of that property, runs right there on the corner, to move his mother in, is what he discussed. I think they voted, I think two voted in favor of it with proof that there was a hardship for his mother for her medical conditions.
Looks like three, three voted. Four. Okay, two. Yeah.
So we looked at the property, and there was two mobile homes there previously, so there's two, I think there's two subject tanks that are already there, and the mobile homes were there, I think, until 2014. So they, someone had removed them, I think, prior to him buying the property. So I think he's wanting to say where the previous ones were, were at before.
What's that going to do to the five acres? What was that going to do, Brian? Will they want to cut out?
Well, he'd have put more than one house on five acres, but I think it's reported before now that Chairman Haney, it's in here, Chairman Haney then told the board that with these documents, it would fall under a medical hardship type variance.
Right, yes, sir.
And they, and they, if you go and read the whole thing, it, you know, it said providing documentation for medical hardship at this meeting is what they asked him to do, which I think is what is done, right?
Yes, yes, that's what.
Any other additional questions for Mr. John?
Thanks, John.
Okay, thanks, sir. Okay, any other further discussion of the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion? What's the board's pleasure on this?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment. Looking over Ms. Martinez's health history, it appears that she does have some significant health issues, and it was requested that she would need assistance from family for adult daily living activities, as well as, she's had numerous hospitalizations, it appears. And I think reading this, as well as documentation from a pastor in Florida, I think she certainly meets the guidelines for a medical hardship, and it appears as though that her son would need to be a caregiver for her. Based on, we had three votes. Um, based on, we had three votes, uh, for, uh, but Mr. Martinez did not have any documentation at that time. Um, I feel as though that, that this documentation meets the guidelines to grant a variance. So, I would like to make a motion to, uh, to approve this variance.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to grant the variance request for the additional home on this property. Do we have a second to that motion?
Sir.
A second by Commissioner Blake Moore to that motion. Any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the variance is granted. And, uh, sir, if you'll just, uh, be sure and go by the planning office because there are requirements for permitting, uh, to bring a mobile home onto that property. And so, just get with the planning office and they can guide you through that process pretty easily.
Thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is purchase order two thousand twenty-three dash eight fifty-four in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. This is for some additional air packs and cylinder units for Walker County Fire. Uh, our fire chief, Blake Hodge, and deputy chief are both currently out of town. They were going to, uh, do a final inspection on the three new fire trucks that we ordered back, gosh, over a year ago, I guess. So, they hope to get those final inspections done this week and hopefully we'll have those new trucks, uh, sometime next month. And so, uh, he wanted to be to share with y'all that, uh, some of these air packs, um, and cylinders will be going on these new trucks. So, we would have the new air packs and new cylinders for the new trucks. Um, you can see they have the quote there, uh, from Municipal Emergency Services. So, this is in line to what we've been doing in the past. And we have approved some other cylinders and, uh, air packs earlier this year. And, uh, this would be to further equip the, the new trucks coming in.
It's also, yeah, we, those others, I think, were to replace some aged.
Yeah, those were replacing aged.
Aged as well, so.
That's right. So, this would be to equip the three new trucks because we still have those others in service. And like you say, they were to, to, uh, replace older equipment.
Did that have a, a splash landing or?
Uh, this actually would be out of our, uh, some of our ARPA funds that we had allocated that we can use for this. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve purchase order two thousand twenty-three dash eight fifty-four to Municipal Emergency Services in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. We do have our monthly statistical data report. Uh, you will see there on our intake, we did have a, a busy month. Uh, seventy-six dogs and a hundred and thirty cats. Uh, I think, if I remember correctly, there was about ninety-plus of those cats come out of one residential location in a hoarding case. And so, the team, uh, partnered with, uh, one of our local cities to help them with that. And so, they were very successful of working with some rescues in an emergency situation. You'll see there on the outtake, uh, to rescues, we had a hundred and thirteen cats go out in that month. And so, we're very appreciative for our rescue partners and other agencies that we work with when we come across hoarding type cases. So, that was a pretty significant case. It really had all hands on deck that day. Uh, you'll see there in our, um, dropping, dropping down, say to our elections, uh, still having people registering to vote every year. And a lot of that is driven when they renew their driver's license. Our fire department continues to be busy running over five hundred calls a month. It's five hundred and twenty-one calls for the month. Uh, units handling the service was seven hundred and fifty-six. And they installed eleven fire alarms, uh, smoke detectors, well, actual smoke alarm detectors. Uh, you'll see there, single-family home construction, there was thirty-two new permits in April that come off of thirty-nine in March. So, there was three hundred and seventy-three building inspections of the different trades that we inspect on new construction or also in remodels as well. Uh, point out there that, um, uh, we had thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one visits to our website. Our pat hole patching, pat, yeah.
Pat hole patching.
Yeah. Our pothole patching truck, if I can get that out. My mouth's getting dry. Three hundred and ninety-one potholes patched. And while we're talking about that, uh, we are, uh, working to finish up the paving, uh, contract that we issued a little over a year ago on finishing up the paving on Dottery Gap. That road from Highway one fifty-seven to the bottom of the mountain's been completed. Uh, now that the landslide was fixed, that's what was holding us up. And then they are working on the, uh, final top layer of asphalt on West Cove Road all the way to Highway one ninety-three. So, they're in the midst of that as we speak and should have that done in the coming days as long as weather stays good. Uh, transit's still busy at twenty-five hundred and ninety-five trips with transit. So, a lot going on. All right. Next item on our agenda is Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Blake Moore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out. Appreciate what you guys do on appraisals. We know it's not easy. I put a lot into it, which I do a good job, but I do appreciate it. Appreciate all the county employees. Um, I did work hand in hand with the city of Rossville and got the drive into the Rossville Park named after Cartha Rogers. That was well deserved. Uh, we got that signed up this week. So, I just appreciate what everybody does. Fun, happy, call, text, or email, thank you.
Thanks, folks, for getting involved. Uh, your thoughts, ideas, uh, always help us. Continue to reach out if you can. Like I said, call, text, or email. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Appreciate everybody coming out. I, I did have a chance to stop by the Annex.
What Annex is that?
Annex two. I think, uh, uh, done a great job there. Should be opening up probably.
Probably by the first of July.
Yeah, Todd, he said, "Hold it by the first of July." Done a lot of work there. And thanks to Carter for getting the mobile over the mountain quick this year. And, yeah. Appreciate it. Yeah, that's great of him. Thank you, Robert.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Uh, just wanna, uh, tell our county employees, thank you for the job that you do, the hard work. It's certainly appreciated. Um, Keith, Sarah, Terry, thank you so much for coming tonight and presenting. And now you've got a very difficult job, but I know you do a wonderful job too. So, just thank y'all. Uh, I hope everyone comes out for Senior Citizens Day. I did want to thank the Board again for the proclamation. Uh, it's a special day for, for myself and my family. And I think it's a special day to honor our seniors. Um, last, I want to give a shout out to the animal shelter. A good friend of mine donated, uh, donated, adopted two kittens this week. And she was just most complimentary of the shelter and the professionalism. And so, uh, great job, animal shelter. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to say we had a great tire amnesty day back on Earth Day. Had a great turnout. I know I've already heard from a few people that just missed it and want to know if we were gonna do another one. And we are going to apply for another grant to do one in the fall, maybe around October, first of November. So, those of you that still have some tires laying around or accumulate a few old junk tires you want to get rid of, just, uh, be patient with us unless you want to pay to dispose of them. Hopefully, we'll get a grant that will pay that for you. So, uh, just be watching for that. Hopefully, October, November timeline will have that.
How many were collected? Pounds or numbers, you know?
They have those counts and I don't remember. I know I saw Joe post that, but I don't remember how many we had. It wasn't the biggest one we've ever had, which is good. So, that means the number of tires are, are coming down. But, uh, but we had a good team of people and, uh, it, it went really, went really well. It was a beautiful day. I mean, it was seventy degrees and they first told us it was gonna rain and we did not have one drop. So, it turned out really well and very pleased with that. I know, uh, Date County's got one for those residents in Date County. I believe they rescheduled it to this weekend, if I'm not mistaken, for those of you in Date County. But you gotta be a resident in Date County. Uh, also too, I wanted to give an update on, uh, one of our team members in our Public Works Department, Clarence Johnson. Uh, he was involved in a, a work accident, uh, back a few weeks ago. Uh, had to be, uh, Air Force, Air Flight lifted to Erlanger. Uh, they have been amazing at Erlanger for him. He's been super, super complimentary of the care, the service that he's received at Erlanger. Uh, he's still got quite a lo, long road of recovery with his injured leg. But I did get good news yesterday that he has been moved over to Siskins for rehabilitation. So, all of his surgeries appear to be done. I think he ended up with at least four surgeries.
I think they did a total of five.
Five, five surgeries. Did a total of five different surgeries on his leg. Uh, he's been in, in great spirits, uh, very much a man of faith. And his family's just been outstanding. And, uh, we appreciate, uh, all that, uh, Public Works and other departments have done to support the family. And, uh, we wish him a speedy recovery so we can get him, get him back on the team. And he very much feels everyone's prayers and has been very grateful for the outpouring of support and things that people are doing to assist the family. So, remember, uh, Clarence Johnson in your prayers. Uh, he's a longtime team member of our county government, works in our Public Works. Is just, uh, just a freak accident and, uh, he, he's gonna push through it. So, he's doing very well. Okay. Uh, we do have a couple items for executive session. So, I need to make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel item and also a real estate item. So, do we have a second on that motion? We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. We stand adjourned for executive session and we'll be back shortly. Okay. Ready? It is eight forty-five PM still, May the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We've just adjourned from our executive session. There's no further business of the Board. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.